All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the recessed regular meeting for the Pascagoula City Council. Today is January twenty-one, two thousand and twenty. We have a very large agenda tonight, so I would appreciate respecting not only the council, but other members in the audience. If you need to carry on a conversation above a whip spur, please go ahead and take it outside. Please silence your cell phones. If you wish to address the council, we do have a pad and paper up here. Please go ahead and fill that out, and we will get to you at the end of the open session agenda. Let's go ahead now and have our invocation by Councilman Felix Hornet and our pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Matt Parker.
First of all, I would like to thank everyone for being present tonight, for their support, and hopefully to be all the needed attention out there. By our heads, Father God, in the name of Jesus, thank you for allowing us to come together to make the census for our great city of Pascagoula and the city. Let us be convicted in our hearts if we don't do what's right, Father God. We are definitely here to make our city a better place to live. Let your power rain out from heaven, inspire us to do the right thing, in Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please go ahead and play.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item, let's go ahead and consider amendments to the agenda. I have three I would like to propose. The first is to add, as addressing the council, under four C, Angie Stewart and Tom Wilson with the Pascagoula branch of the Jackson and George County Regional Library System. I would also like to add an informational item as under my items at ten E regarding the land trust and proposal to plant oak trees in Pascagoula. And then also on the docket of claims, I need to remove a payment or claim by Coastal Development, and I would like to turn that into nine B since I will need to lead the run during that time.
I agree.
That will be nine B, I guess, on the agenda. Does any other member of the council have an item they wish to amend on the agenda? Here are none. Is any member of the staff or the acting city attorney have any item they wish to amend on the agenda? Here are none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, next item will be to address the council, and first up is Kelly Castleberry with the Mississippi Department of Transportation, District Six engineer. Mr. Castleberry, please come on up.
Hello, everyone. The city manager asked me to come and talk to you a little bit about our Highway ninety project. It's currently under contract. This project started out probably about two administrations ago, all the way back when the city manager was the coach. So the project's been out there a long time. It is an H S I P project, which stands for High Hazard Safety Improvement Project. It has federal funds in it. The project is such that it is remedying some issues that we had with accidents on the Highway ninety corridor, specifically from the railroad tracks all the way out to Chevron Drive, which, of course, that's outside the city, that's in the north. So it spans kind of two cities. The project is underway. The contractor actually started laying pipe yesterday. They have track control out there on each shift. Most of your residents have seen the lane shift that's out there right now. So the first order of action is they're going to be laying pipe along that median all the way down through from railroad track all the way to Chico. That's the first phase of the project. And so they'll start that. Overall, what the project does is we're going to change some of the crossovers. We would call them directional crossovers, based on the accident data that we compiled for past ten years. And what that is going to allow is it's going to allow a left turn off of Highway ninety onto the frontage roads, but it will prohibit a left turn from the frontage road onto Highway ninety. You'll have to go down through traffic signals in order to access a left turn. Makes it a little bit safer. U-turns will be allowed at these directional crossovers, so if a motor is traveling either eastbound or westbound and we should go in the opposite direction, it'll be in that directional crossover, just like you went on Highway forty-nine if you turned on Highway forty-nine and weren't at the turn. And you'll make a U-turn and travel back the other direction. Also with this project, we're upgrading all the traffic signals from pretty much the railroad track all the way to Chevron Drive as well. Right now, your city does not have interconnection to the CSX railroad track. So what that means is every time a train is traveling on CSX, those signals don't change for a lot of motors on ninety pre-fully. The signal's still going, just like every direction, whether the train's there or not. We're going to interconnect those signals with CSX railroad track. So when a train is passing, you can kind of clear up some of the congestion on US nine so it's not just sitting there waiting on the end of the turn. So you get the traffic signals. At completion of the project, we're going to come back in, and right now, I mentioned the word cross slopes. Right now, we have, with the slow drains towards the median, when we get through, the water and drains outside edge, that's really why we're doing most of the drainage issues that we're doing. And so you're going to get new asphalt on the Highway ninety corridor after the completion of the drainage project, hand the signal up first. We also have what we call an I T S component to this project, Intelligent Transportation System. Mainly, we're looking at folks that are industrial park and probably your Ingalls corridor. As those motors leave in the evening time when they're getting off work, or if they're coming in, if there's an issue on Interstate ten or Highway sixty-three, we'll be able to detour those folks and get them around that instead of just sitting in traffic. They'll have information boards up that will alert them, okay, this is what's going on, this is the direction we need to take. So that's kind of the project, I guess, in summary. Cost of the project, twelve million dollars. There's three hundred and fifty working days in the project. Let me clarify what working days is. The contractor bids his time into that job when they bid. They had several contractors bid on it, they did three hundred and fifty. So what that means is if the weather's bad and they cannot do work, they don't get charged time for it. Thus, that's the reason why the contract will go into twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, based on working days. So if you have like a Mardi Gras event, and for some reason we have to get the contractor out of the way because y'all have Mardi Gras or some type of event going on, we're not going to charge you time based on that event, it's an access to job site. So that's kind of the project that's out there right now, and it is under construction. They have started work. So with that, I will kind of open up questions for y'all.
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
Well, from Highway ninety between Hospital Road and Chico.
Okay.
Going east and west, the frontage road where all the business is going. When you come off those ramps, there's a speed there going down.
From Highway ninety down here, right?
McDonald's, Lowe's, in that area. Are you going to put any kind of prison rail there?
Right now, we're not. Now, there will be grading that gets done based off what the drainage, after we make the drainage improvements. So there will be some regrading that occurs as part of this project.
Because several pictures were sent over, you can't see that unless you make that turn, no vehicles are upside down.
Right.
And those were taken to stop. People just wondering, be some kind of safety, railings or something there.
When they, when they regrade, when the project is complete, either it will have the safety link or they'll be regraded as such that it does not require safety. Also, I have, the city manager has a set of plans for this project. The city has had a set of plans that shows tripping layout, construction phasing, and natural construction ground as well, not by more than one of the other things as well.
Castleberry, does any of the work include the frontage roads, repaving the frontage roads? It seems like they'll have more traffic on the frontage roads.
Some, there is work on those frontage roads, especially where at signalization, we're going to be stopping some of that roof movement on that frontage road. So everywhere you see a traffic signal, the access is going to change from that frontage road at that traffic signal. So there will be work that occurs on that frontage road.
Are paving all of the frontage road, that's not?
Not the entire frontage road, only the areas where we're going to be doing work right now. Now, let's say that we get towards the end of the project, and we notice that there's some distress in certain areas, at that time, we'll catch it while they're doing the paving, but nothing specialized other than what we're doing right now.
So for my invocation, is all of the frontage roads not that, or is part of it some of the city has pulled from Pascagoula?
That's a good question. And it depends, some of it is Pascagoula, some of it is MDOT. That roadway line was in and out based on how the highway was, I guess, mauled at that time.
I'm assuming the upgrading of the lights, or are you talking about lights that are on the pulse?
Traffic signals. I want to say, I'm sorry, lights, I mean, signalization.
Okay.
MDOT doesn't do any lighting in any of the cities.
I understand, okay.
You mentioned that the work would be done in phases. Are you talking about phases in terms of moving from, let's say, west to east along Highway ninety, or is it just going to be the different types of work? Are the set of phases like drainage now, and then perhaps regrading, and then installing the traffic lights and so forth?
That's both. So right now, the contractor's going to focus pretty much from the railroad track all the way to Chico street. That's the first order of business. What the contractor may do after that is they may back up and they may do some paving by the time they're maybe April, maybe warm enough that they can do paving, and then they'll do some paving in that section before they move to the next section. But there will be work that will occur from different kinds, you're going to have various subcontractors coming in, but one contractor's not doing it at all. So based on what works available for their subcontractor, you're going to see other work occurring. So your signalization, you may see a signalization crew out there working at an intersection that may not be between the railroad and Chico. It's based on his, what his work schedule is.
And the turning lanes that exist now, or at least the places, the breaks in the median where you can turn, will the new turning lanes, whether they're U-turns or just allowing the left turns off the highway, will they be in approximately the same locations, or will they be spaced out farther? Will there be fewer, will there be more?
They're approximately the same location. There are a couple instances where they will, they will not exist at all, or where there's a crossing that's so close to another cross emergency accident. For the most part, you're going to see the crossings where they are, but the access changes to the left turn off of US nine. And then there are some that we're not making directions, there are some that still remain pretty much altered already, just based off that. If it, once we complete the projects and the traffic pattern changes and we see an issue evolve, at that time, it's. Any other questions?
All the intersections will remain the same, no, it won't be closed.
What now, so your main intersections, or even traffic signals or your main barriers, they're remaining the same, but we are making geometric changes. Some of them are going to get new left turn lanes, some of them are going to get offset turn lanes, some of them may get directional. Now, there are some median crossovers that exist already that may be, you know, to a median road off the frontage road. Those get altered, so those, some of those will get altered, and that's in the set of plans that I've been working on.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Castleberry, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate the information, and I'm sure you'll get more questions as the project's in progress.
No problem. Answer any question, all right? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next now, we have a presentation by CenterPoint, and I see several representatives there. If you want to come on in and tell us what's new with CenterPoint.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Burrow, and thank the board for having me. I always could be here with the city council in Pascagoula, couldn't meet Mr. Silverman earlier. I'm Kurt Abear, attorney for CenterPoint. As you know, CenterPoint, we purchased the system at the end of eighteen or beginning of nineteen, depending on how you want to look at it. I have Jason Popper out here. Jason is the district director, and he's going to share with you some of the things that they've done, but I thought I'd just kind of open it up, tell you a few things that you may want to know. As you know, we've replaced about five miles of mine in the city right now. As you know, there was a fair amount, conservatively speaking, of deferred maintenance by the city that had to be done with the system to bring the system up where it would be a safe and reliable system. So there were four hundred and thirteen leaks thus far that we've corrected. One that was right there on the in-house line, right outside the hospital, that actually they were able to get in there and replace without taking the system offline. So the hospital was able to stay online, everything was safe and secure. They have, during the period, replaced all meters, and I know sometimes when you do things like that, when you upgrade systems, it's a little bit of inconvenience. No one likes having that. We certainly hate that. We're trying to get it done as quickly as possible, and that has been done. CenterPoint has spent over three million dollars thus far upgrading the system. They will continue to do that. Some of the things that are available to you right now that you did not have available to you when the city had the system is the ability to give donations to those that are involved, to help and be a corporate partner, which Jason is going to tell you more about. One of the things that we talked a little bit about that we've not had application for that, if you have anyone in need, let us know, there's a program called LIHEEP. And if you're not familiar with it, we have sent information on early on, but I'll remind you, it is a low-income, eating, energy, and assistance program. There's certain criteria, but we can, through that program, if you have someone who's in need, who's in low income, as long as they've paid up to date, we can pay one month of their deal, and we're willing to help him do that, and if they need help with the application process, that's something we can do. You couldn't do that at City of Pascagoula. Someone didn't pay their bill, or you could just cut them off. So that's something that's available to you now that we are happy to help you with. But bottom line, I'm going to turn it over to Jason, and I have him to stand up here and answer any questions. He's got other folks here that work for you that he wants to introduce to you. But what you have right now is you have a safe, secure, and reliable gas system, and a corporate partner that's going to help you.
Thank you, Kurt. So thank you for having us again. It's been a pleasure to work closely with the city since the acquisition, and we wanted to take some time today to give you an update on some of the agreements that we made at the time when we purchased the system. So with me, I do have Bobby Fontenot. He's area manager. He basically covers now from Pascagoula back east about the Covington area, and then it's torn off this weekend. So we have about thirty, forty-eight thousand customers that he's responsible for on a day basis. Also with us is James Richardson. He's our regulatory manager. So if anything gets, any details on rates, anything like that, he will be the subject matter expert that can answer those questions. So one of the deals we had made, the agreement, was that we would keep the Pascagoula rates in effect for one year. So the CenterPoint state-approved rate went into effect in the first of two thousand and twenty, so there's a new rate in effect on all the customers in Pascagoula, and hence our state-approved rate that's applied to our other one hundred and thirty dollar customers. So before I get into the details on the rates, I want to talk a little bit about our work in the engineering area. To date, as Kurt said, a part of that three billion dollars, one point three billion dollars was spent on rehab in this area. So we had several projects, and I'll pass two copies of the map that I brought that shows the areas where we perform rehab, and I'm coming to see the type that we replaced in those areas. Another half a million dollars was spent in the repair. So Kurt talked about over four hundred leaks that we actually have repaired. Well, we detected seven hundred and forty-five leaks in the Pascagoula areas since we acquired the system. We showed you a video of a car unit that had samples per billion versus samples per million, which was the technology that was previously used here. And we had, we have also detected in the seven hundred and forty-five leaks, one hundred and twenty-six of those were Class A leaks, which were emergency leaks, that have all been repaired to, again, make the system, as Kurt said, safe, secure, and reliable. We spent over a million dollars on the meter changes, so nearly one hundred percent of the meters here have any change with our meters that have the remote read capabilities, and so that's, that's, that has been completed to date. To talk a little bit about sponsorships and involvement in the community, we've supported the fire department. We provided a gift grant to the fire department of fifteen hundred dollars, and we look at opportunities to help all of our emergency responders in all of our cities when they want to purchase various types of safety equipment. So we usually look at that with a maximum of about fifteen hundred dollars, or we'll split the cost of whatever safety equipment they want to purchase. We also sponsored the Booster Club here in Pascagoula, and as part of one of the concerns about the city, we do have one employee that lives here in Pascagoula, so, and that employee is a first responder. Now, to give them the details on the rates, so we have three different classes of rates. One is the residential class, another is, is the small commercial, and then it's the large commercial class. In a residential class, in a low usage situation, those customers could see a rate increase of about two dollars per month. And residential classes in a higher use or in winter months, they can see a seven dollar decrease in our rate. So depending on where their usage lies, and the main component in that is that our customer charge is slightly higher than what the previous customer charge, base customer charge was for the city rate, but our charge per CCF of gas is less, so the more gas the customer will use is kind of a difference. The medium or the small commercial class can see on average a fifty-three dollars, fifty-four dollars decrease in our rate per month, and a large commercial customer can see a eight hundred dollar reduction in their rates per month. So overall, it is that our rate structure is going to, should work well in the city. Now with that also, we talked about what you receive in the form of a franchise tax, which we pay about three point seven percent of the gross receipts of the gas sales here in the city. So on February tenth, we're going to be making contact with the controller to see if we figure out if we want an electronic email or you want a check delivered, but the City of Pascagoula is going to get a check for slightly over eighty-two thousand dollars for the gas sales in the city for twenty twenty. Thank you. Open up for questions.
On the rate increase, you said that perhaps a slight increase for small residential customers and a decrease for large residential customers in ballpark percentages. What percentage of Pascagoula residential customers are small versus large?
Bobby, can you?
The vast majority are residential customers with businesses making that small commercial component of it. I would say probably at least eighty-five percent are residential.
I understand that, but my question was, he said that small residential customers could see a two dollar a month increase, whereas large residential customers could see a seven dollar decrease. And I was just trying to understand, of the universe of residential customers, what percentage qualifies small that will see a rate increase, and what percentage will see a rate decrease?
Sorry, I think I'll take that. So the first class was residential, and the second class was small commercial, and then the third class was large commercial. So in the residential-only class, the smaller class, a lower usage month for a residential customer, they could see about a two dollar increase in their rate on that monthly bill. But the residential class in a higher usage month, where a residential customer would use, I have some varying numbers, but if they were to use, I think it's eighty CCF of gas, which is kind of a typical winter, colder month, they could see a seven dollar decrease for the residential. So it's sort of varied, and it is mainly because the cost of per CCF on our rate is less than half the cost of what the old Pascagoula was.
I follow you.
Okay. All of that's.
And one of the other questions I had was, one of the reasons that I voted to sell the system was because we did not have the ability, the financial revolver, to expand the gas system inside the city to serve those areas which have historically not had gas. Yours truly, one of them. Is there any plan on the horizon to potentially expand the system inside the city where you can provide service?
Simple answer is yes. We're looking to expand as much as we can, but it all depends on economic feasibility. On average, a customer that qualifies gets one hundred feet of main and one hundred foot of service line allowance to get to them. So if you're a thousand feet away, but we have ten customers on that thousand feet of extension, well then, those customers qualify no cost. So we pool those together as best we can, and then we look for opportunities to improve the eligibility of our system that would bring gas main in places where it doesn't exist today. So you will see expansion as it makes sense. Does this improve the review of everything we do by the commission?
Okay.
There's one other reason I wanted to, CenterPoint, come to Pascagoula. I was looking at what you said about leaks. Little leaks, pipes, bams, meters, what have you come up with?
All.
All of it. Pacific area, kind of.
Well, so if you look at that sketch, that's from our, from our due diligence in the earlier meetings we had with your engineering staff here, was that we identified areas that we deemed to be high-risk, being it was a legacy type of insulation, or older varicose steel, or unprotected steel, or areas that we verified without a car unit to have more leaks, like Kurt said in our section, or length of pipe, so we replaced pipe in the higher-risk areas first.
So your leaks, where they go, relative to our commercial?
It's a combination again, Bobby.
A lot, a lot of it that we find is on the, is on the mains and some services, and where, where we find a leak on the surface, we just go ahead and replace that surface with a new surface. And the mains, we have to, you know, do various things, but it's varied. We've already, as you know, we've replaced all the meters, so we have very little leaks now on the, on meter sets, that's above ground. Most of it would be on the surface or the main underground, is where we have all the leaks at right now.
Any other member of the council have any questions?
Oh, well, I was just wondering about, I think y'all keep up with your response times when you get a call, but your response time running fairly good? You know, we had that.
Well, I could definitely get back to you on that. I wonder if you have the latest on this concern.
Our average response time is, is from the call coming in to our tech arriving is about thirty-five minutes in our particular area. Like Jason said, we do have a tech that lives here in Pascagoula, and we also have a tech that's lives in Joe Shane, and we have one that lives on East Ocean Springs. So all of those guys, half hours maybe, you know, just a little bit longer. We usually have several guys that own a car twenty-four hours a day, but the, one guy that works in Pascagoula that lives here, he works in the city all the time during working hours, and other techs come over to help him at certain times, depending what we need, because that tech is here every day.
Anything else? Well, gentlemen, unless you have anything you want to close with, we appreciate you coming very much and giving us an update on CenterPoint and its activities in the city, and glad to see so far it's been successful, and certainly glad you caught as many leaks as you have. All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda, four C, is going to be Angie Stewart and Tom Wilson with the Pascagoula Library.
Hi there. I appreciate, first of all, you taking time to fit me in on this busy agenda. We've got issues, and we had thought that our problems were being discussed with the city council, and apparently they were not. So let me explain the situation, and then I'm going to hand it over to Tom, who is our facilities manager, and he's going to tell you the, basically, the technical part of it, but I'm going to actually put this into words for you. I appreciate more than you know how wonderful the City of Pascagoula has been to us, because, you know, I really feel like we get a lot of support for the library from the city council plan, from the people of Pascagoula. If you traveled by right now, you would see there's not an empty parking space hardly at all in the library parking lot. It's full of children and families. Two weeks ago, we had an event that our new city manager attended, and we had five hundred and eleven people come through the door that day. The number one problem with that was that the temperature in the building was right at sixty degrees all day long, and we had no way to really regulate that. Since September, we have been promised that our HVAC system was just about to be finished, that we needed to have a pump built, and then it was just about to be fixed. And so basically, what's been happening is we have no way to regulate the heating and cooling in the library system.
Let me interrupt you for a second. When you say "promised to be fixed," was that a promise coming from someone employed by the city, or was this the company that was hired by the city to provide maintenance services?
I would say that was from employees of the city. Yeah, and we'll get to more of that in just a second. You know, we understand how incredibly expensive that cooling tower is, we know. The problem is that with it being so old and the maintenance has been substandard on it, it's now falling apart, and we've been limping along since September, and we just are at the point now where we're about to not have anything, no heating, no air conditioning, nothing. So I guess basically, first of all, I wanted to let you know, I did try to address you guys through the council at web address, it's on the city website, and I don't think you got any of my emails, because I spoke to Stephen Burrow earlier, and he said he did not receive that email, so I don't know if that's working or not, because I wanted, that was like the fifteenth. The other thing that I heard is that a lot of you weren't aware of how desperate our situation was. So that is why we brought in Tom Wilson. He's going to tell you a little bit more of the nuts and bolts, because I'll be honest, I am not an air conditioner, heating mechanic, and if I was, I would have fixed it yesterday, but I'm not. So I'm going to turn it over to Tom, and let him speak.
Well, thank you for letting me speak. First, let me not throw Josh under the bus, okay? We've actually gotten more than a fair amount of attention by your staff, first Jackie and then Josh, but we've gotten to a point now where we have to let you guys know what is going on over there. We have a very good overall system that is in desperate, desperate straits right now, starting with the ventilation system, the heat exchangers up in the vent ducting. The good ones are only eighty-five percent quality. The ones going in the same river, which is our geology library that we're supposed to maintain humidity levels are a hundred percent quality. That means that we're not having any control, even if we had air conditioning. The fans, when they start again due to power outages because we're in a steady state, they don't throw things off because you don't have that control for us. But if we have power outages, which do occur here unfortunately, fans come back on and they spread black crap, perhaps mold, perhaps just dirt, throughout the lot around all the surfaces. Okay, so the last contract was supposedly to maintain all the stuff and didn't happen. Getting into the camp of equipment room, they have, with the exception of boiler, backup systems in that system, okay? You've got two condensing power pumps, you've got two chill water pumps, you've got two hot water circulating pumps, you've got two chill units with two compressors and these chillers, one boiler, now I've got four air handlers, okay? One of the air handlers, the motor's gone, okay? So let's take the pumps. Right now, starting with the condensing power pumps, one of them's frozen. It can't be turned. The other pump, which is the only operating pump, leaked. The mechanical seal's still, it's out of alignment. The coupling is literally going to fail any day and well, the bearing of that pump is going bad. It's so loud in there that you guys can't talk to each other, daddy, six inches, that's so screwed. It's that bad. It's going to fail. It's not. Will it fail? It's going to fail and the other one has failed. The chill water circulating pumps, one of them failed during a power outage. Thank goodness, Air Masters, who was now your service contractor, was able to identify a problem, upturned wire and fix it, get that pump back online. Because the other pump had failed in the coupling. It wasn't aligned, okay? And a bearing in that pump is going bad. So even if they replace the coupling, the pump is bad. Hot water circuit pump, thank you for replacing the one hot water circuit pump we had in the system. The other one's literally hasn't been listening before I came. It's not there. That was a five thousand dollar brand new pump because it went so far, the pump casing broke. When I got here, it was a mechanical seal was leaking. I let the city know at the time that was about a thousand dollars trip and about a day worth of work, all right? Very expensive work, but not much work. Now it was five thousand dollars. They got this pump back in, but it's not aligned. You can't turn it on. Even if you could turn it on, the boiler, which provides the hot water, which regulates the temperature, in fact, either heat or to maintain whatever these water zones, is plugged out to moldering the system because there's no water treatment in the hot water system. On the chill water system and the condensing water system right now, the treatment system is broken. The makeup water system for the cooling tower is broken. That's how come I'm not worried about engineers of these with the cooling tower. Why? Because I've been throttling the water into the bathroom cooling tower to constantly replace the water in there with treated city water. And guys, I mean, that's basically a high level about our system. The pipes are corroded. However, can't be, some of the stuff can be stopped, some stuff can be repaired and maintained and some of the stuff just has to be replaced, okay? The ventilation duct cleaning is probably going to be around fifty-five thousand dollars, right? And that's pretty much everything. We have a mini split AC system up in the IT room. That's our backup air conditioning system. It failed. This is for our service. We've got a quarter million dollar equipment out there that runs the entire library system. So if we lose that, we don't just lose Pasagula, we lose all eight libraries and they just can't operate. So today, we paid to have Air Masters come out and put some coolant into that mini split because the mini split is under your service contract. It was left off your inventory, okay? I'd get into the city of price to replace them. I went out and got bids for it, supplied it to the city and it needs to be replaced. It has reached its end of life also. So as far as the pump repairs and the cost of the treatment systems and all that, I know Air Masters who just came on board, they appear to be very competent people. All right, I think we're blessed to have them and I think with your support that we can make this a decent, working, reliable system. But right now, guys, we are honest last week. I have literally been there every day since the first November, every day, trying to keep by estimating what the sun's going to do and how much heat is going to provide the building by turning our air conditioning unit on and off manually, cycling on and off, right? Right now, when I came in, thank goodness, I turned it off early Sunday morning, it was only sixty-one degrees in there, which I was very happy with because I was afraid it would be about thirty. So that's what we're working with.
Let me ask you a couple of questions, um, and, and let me preface this by letting the council, that when this came to my attention, I was concerned about the lack of service for the last several months that you described. And so I went back and, and I recalled from, uh, several of the meeting minutes that we had, if I can find them in my pile here. Back on September fifth, the council gave notice to the then, uh, provider of HVAC services for the entire city. Uh, Star Service, we put them on notice that we would not renew the current contract. Then in December, or actually in October, we sent out an RFP for HVAC maintenance services. We received two responses back, Air Masters and Star Service. And the city authorized entering into a contract, uh, beginning December eighteen of twenty nineteen, uh, for Air Masters to handle not just the library, but every building here in the city. So with that sort of prelude, and I'm sure we got a lot of questions about a lot of different things. My question to you is, was there a point in time that Star, that Star Service literally stopped providing any service? Or that, I guess I'm trying to understand, how long has this been going on with, with a lack of maintenance services from the city contractor?
I have to pull my notes back?
I, I understand.
But I believe it was the first part of September or the first quarter of October, Star Service quit coming. We got told, there are no more service, all right? The acting city manager took my point of contact, Jackie, and turned it over to Josh. Now that he's not ever very having to do probably the job of three or four people in the city myself, adding back to his plate. He's done his best to respond to us, okay? I tell him about the issue and he does what he can to get a purchase order, to get like Air Masters over to attempt to address the problem. He attempted to address the heating problem, found out the pump had to be replaced. At the same time, he found out that the boiler needed to be serviced, okay? In my opinion, it should have been serviced at that point in time. It should have been looked at and a decision made at that point in time. Hey, the system is down now. Let's scandal this in an intelligent manner. Let's look at it, let's fix it now or let's replace it now. Let's keep the part coming. It's a long lead timeline. You know what I mean?
Tom, I'm very glad. We've been dealing with this problem probably for four or five years and it's pretty much been on the fly's leg. And, and it's going back several years, but at one time, I think it was in the neighborhood of six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars worth of work that needed to be done on the cooling tower. Is that correct?
The cooling tower has been replaced. It's a brand new tower, a few years old, okay? Some of the systems to the cooling tower, in my opinion, and so in my opinion, were installed incorrectly, which are causing some of these issues, okay?
On the new installation?
On the new installation of the pumps, okay? You've got channel lever out piping system, which number one, press down if you know anything about channel levers, attached to a vibrating and engineered that way pump base. So you got tore, that's happening every time you turn that pump on before it starts to blow up. This being stopped and also being forced down at the same time by the piping system. That could have been fixed. That, that's, that's a design issue. I mean, but some of the things that I'm talking about are simple, cheap fixes. We're not talking a whole lot of money. But if you don't fix the heat exchangers, you can't control the temperature. And then what happens is your system's running at constant max capacity all the time, trying to do its job. So you start with the ventilation system and you work your way back. Yes, I understand it's not a whole lot of money to do this, but the problem is, is we've gotten to the point now where it's going to fail. The condensing power is going to fail. We're going to be at a point where I have absolutely no heating and no air conditioning. And we have a portable air conditioning unit bending into the hallway up in the IT room right now, trying to protect our service. If I lose that server system, because I'm going to have to shut it down as opposed to lose, because we've got to replace it.
Does somebody within the city have, have the estimate from Air Masters on what is going to fix the system?
I provided Josh two bids to replace that system, just the, just the mini split. As far as the other stuff goes, I have no idea. You guys have a contractual agreement with Air Masters. I don't.
And they just came on board, so I'm not sure.
And they just came on board and I, I think they're very competent people, but I can't provide that information because I don't know.
If I could add one more thing, um, you know, I know that there has always been issues, one way or the other, with the heating and cooling system. I've read all of the past reports, um, we all took files, but I have to tell you, uh, we've finally really gotten to it on its last way. And this time, you know, if we don't step in, there really is nothing else that we're going to be able to do. So we come down to a smaller fix or a very, very large fix because when we lose all heating and cooling, we may be okay, we would all rather, you know, be cold than we had to be hot because when we head about March and April, it's kind of like a, a terrarium in there and it's really about to get hot. So I just, I, I just want you guys to know where we're coming from. We are, we have tried to not be winders or to bring up things that we know you don't have the funds to do all of it, but we just need some help desperately.
Well, we may have to find the funds somewhere and we may even have to go out and borrow. I mean, I hate that. I absolutely hate it, but we may not have a choice here.
Well, I'm assuming that the energy usage is, is out of sight and just about anything that we do is going to help in that area.
Well, imagine if this were your home air conditioning or heating unit and no matter what you did or where the thermostat was set, it was never correct. So it constantly ran. That's what we're going through right now.
What, what is the timeframe for Air Masters to get back, whether it's with you or with us? And I'm talking about in days. What is the timeframe for them to come back and say, here's what it's going to take and here's what it's going to cost to get the system back up to where, I don't know if you want to call it optimal or usable or some stage or to where it needs to be, I guess, for you to function somewhat properly?
That, that information, that's information that's going to go to you guys, your own city personnel and without whatever process you've developed, they have that information come to you. So I'm not, I'm not a party to the contract.
I understand that you've been talking to them. I just didn't know that you'd had a conversation where they said, we're getting something, okay?
I, they've been doing an assessment. I know they've been doing an assessment. I know they've been getting people in there to take a look at, for example, the treatment system and coming up with a plan. I presume, I presume I don't know, but what I am going to do is because I didn't know what sort of service was required to do, I am going to monitor what it is they do and I will let city personnel know what, what, either they're doing properly or what they're lacking.
Another thing we may ask you to do, or at least I would ask you to do, is you might want to make a list of what they should have been doing because there may be some recourse that we have against Star Service for something they didn't do when they still had three months left on a contract. That's, that's certainly an option for us, but, um, unless, if the council has any more questions for them, I'd like to hear from Josh.
You know, I have a question. Do you know anything about any valves and pipe, special pipes being ordered before any maintenance work can be done with that? Can you do anything about that? Well, that's what I was telling you, thank you.
I know that they ordered a hot water pump and they got it in and they installed it, but they didn't get it aligned because, you know, they need special equipment obviously to do that.
Yeah, that's what I was expecting, so.
And, and I also suspect that, with good reason to suspect, that the piping system needs to be treated to do as much as possible, remove the corrosion from it and get a water treatment into it to prevent the brand new pump from failing. So that's, that's. I, I don't know. I don't have any, 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 I'm not in that conversation.
Josh, do you know anything about?
That's all between you guys and the contract.
Why don't, Josh, why don't you come on up please and just kind of shed whatever light you can on sort of how we got here to where we are?
As far as the heating pump, we did replace, we had a quote to replace that, that's thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, we done it in-house for forty-two hundred dollars. The issues with the library right now, like you said, is lack of maintenance for a long time. I had no idea how bad it was until I got this thrown at me and we looked at it. We're just somewhere in there, we're going to get this place usable and safe to use and get the duct cleaning and somewhere around a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And this is to, to do it correctly. Um, like you said, half of this system is zero airflow. All that air pressure backing up is, is going to start blowing out other areas, ductwork, we're going to have to replace the ductwork. They've got it right now to where we're leaking air to keep from blowing out the backside. Uh, Air Masters done that for us. They had no charge when they done the inspection. They're from the leak in there to keep from blowing out. Uh, we do have pumps and bearings that are bad, one's missing. Uh, they are getting prices on that. They're getting prices on building a chemical flush and a chemical to put back in the heating system. I've got multiple quotes for different jobs that needs to be done there. It was given this quarter and we just, we don't have the budget for it. There was nothing in the budget for it. But that's where we're at. Um, I've done everything we, I can do with what we have to the point where right now we are kind of stuck. Air Masters has been over backwards to do some things for us and even charges for it and try to save what we got. That's what we need.
Any member of the council have any questions for Josh? Um, real quick, what, this is a problem that obviously we've got to give complete attention to on a very quick basis. Um, possibly even requiring us having a special meeting at some point between now and February four. Uh, what is the timeframe do you think that, that you and Air Masters could come to us and say, this is what we need to do and this is how much it's going to cost because obviously we have to have some serious conversation. We, we're not going to have the money budgeted for it for a long time. So do we find the money somewhere? Do we borrow the money? I mean, that's a conversation for us as a council to have, but.
There, there are some, some things that I think we need to do in-house to save us a tremendous amount of money that we can do, just like the pump we done. They have to align it. We don't have the equipment to do that, but we did order the pump. We got it in place. Uh, we got the motor and all hooked up, pipe hooked up. All they have to do is flush it. There's some stuff that we can do and I can, I am working on pricing for that now. And some of the other things, they aren't giving equipment on that we had for a couple of months now. But it was just kind of pushed inside, got a little bit of fun.
And I appreciate y'all thinking of that angle, but in, in my opinion, and Stephen mentioned it earlier, I think we need to look at somebody to replace them all, that we can hold reliable. Because the first thing they're going to say is, if something goes wrong with what they did, it's because the city of Pasagula did this part of it over here. So I would much rather see a quote from somebody, Air Masters, or somebody to go in and fix the whole thing and, and not go in and piece it all together because you'll always have the question about who's responsible for it.
I mean, but the entire system needs to be replaced. I know we can't do that. There's just no way. We're talking queen and half of the quarter million dollars, you know, to replace that system. It can't be done. But I understand where, where you're coming from and I can, we can do that. We can, I can get with them and they can give me a total price to come in and replace everything that needs to be replaced and get it up and running.
Well, the, the other thing is, if we can't do it, there's no sense in coming with a, with a number that, there's no way that we can afford. But I guess what I was saying is certainly you, you can prioritize some things like, and, and again, none of us here are familiar with HVAC systems. So if somebody needs to say, this is the absolute bare minimum priority that's got to be done, no holds. So if somebody needs to say, this is the absolute bare minimum priority that's got to be done, no holds barred or we can't open the doors. Versus this is something that's six months out, twelve months out, eighteen months out, that will have to be addressed at some point in the future, but it's gotta be fixed. I, I, I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in, but that's kind of how I see it happening.
We can do that, I, I mean, that's, that's what I was saying, we can get prices on what we have to do now and get the system up and running. Getting the system running, the pumps working, is still not, I think, the problem if one half of the library don't work. And that's fifty-five thousand dollars. And that's, it, it sounds horrible, but that is one of the best prices I think. I can, I can work on it.
Does anyone else have any questions for Josh? Thank you, Mr. Josh, appreciate it. Angela, Tom, I appreciate y'all reaching out to us. Doc Higgins reached out, I know some other members of the library board have reached out as well. And I appreciate you bringing it to our attention and I, I, I realize this was hard because you thought some things were going on that may in fact not have been going on. But you, you said it well, Angela, the library is a, is a, one of those jewels of Pascagoula. Everybody here at this roster knows the library, has been to the library, went to the library as a kid. And it's something that we just all grew up with at some point and it's something that I want us to be proud of. And I want it to be something that our children can be proud of as well. And we need to do what we can to maintain it and keep it going, so thank you.
You're very welcome and I, I do appreciate it. One final thing I'd like to leave you with, the Pascagoula Public Library is the number three circulating library, including the colleges in the state of Mississippi. So you have a lot to be proud of and we appreciate anything you can do to help us, so.
So just before we leave the subject, Josh, I mean, is there, at some, we do have a meeting tomorrow night and I'm not pushing for something in twenty-four hours. But, but I mean, is there something, at some point, did you circulate to the council what we talked about? This is, this is the to-do list that the library has got to have. And if it's something that, you know, we can possibly schedule a meeting for next week to have a discussion on just about the library? And maybe come up with some ideas on how to fund that needed maintenance and repairs? That would be the best time to do it, rather than waiting two weeks until the February meeting?
I can get you something to do.
Okay.
Well, it kind of sounds like they need something done immediately. So we don't, I mean, we kind of kick things around, but they need something now, they don't need us.
They need heat right now and that's what they need and that's what Air Master's working on.
Is there some sort of?
They quote tomorrow for the guy to come out and do the chemical flush and the chemical installation of the system. So they can start running the heat over again.
Well, if there's something that can be done of a temporary nature, just to get it started again, again, we have a meeting tomorrow. I mean, we can amend the agenda to add something, but we've gotta have a, a proposal or something in hand that says, this is what we're gonna do and this is what it's gonna cost and at least get it in front of us, uh, at that time. So that, if, if, whatever you can do by tomorrow would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, do you want to explain?
Is this?
They're running a lot of space heaters, I think thirty-five space heaters right now throughout that building. So you need to be aware of that too and what that probably does to your bill. And that's a lot.
Laura, are those having to be rented or are they something that they had?
No, these are items that we had, um, the circulation staff is having to wear like earmuffs and gloves.
I mean, I was in there today and it felt like the air was running.
So we can't have more than two at the circulation desk because the breakers are popping. Um, we are, we are in dire straits, yeah.
How long have, I, I mean, I, I'll be honest, I, I realized this was going on today when I got the email from the city. So how long has the city known about this?
Um, we started in September, I mean, oh.
The city, you, how long have you known?
September's when they first handed, started handing stuff in.
And today is January the twenty-first, okay, that's what I needed to know.
And too, if that, if that, um, she tried to email all of you last week through that council at the City of Pascagoula. So if that link doesn't work, I would just suggest that we do something about that too, because she never got a response from anyone.
That, that, I'm glad to hear that because I have gotten, I think you sent one last week or maybe a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if Laura, if you used that e, that same link. I have gotten others from in the past, but I, I haven't gotten anything lately, I'll put it that way.
I have a copy of her email if you'd like it.
I, I would like it, yes. If there are no further questions, then let's go on to the next item on the agenda. Thank y'all for coming very much, thank you, thank you Tom. Uh, this will be Mayor's Youth Council, is there any member of the Mayor's Youth Council here? Uh, this is Spotlot, Spotlight, excuse me, is Paradise Delian Grill on Delmas Avenue in Pascagoula. I assume we have some video?
This is a restaurant here in Pascagoula, it's just about the way Paradise. For Vinnie Khan, owner of Paradise Delian Grill located on the corner of Main Avenue Street and Delmas Avenue in downtown Pascagoula. Paradise Delian Grill opened its doors in Pascagoula in October of twenty-ten. And they've been serving up fresh car oil burgers, hot deli sandwiches, fresh salads and soups and daily lunch specials with a couple twists ever since. Owner and general manager Vinnie Khan was working at a car dealership in Pascagoula when he noticed the need for more lunchtime options, especially in the downtown area. He took a chance on the vacant building and turned it into a paradise lunch destination with something on the menu for everyone. Paradise Delian Grill is open for lunch from ten-thirty AM to thirty PM, Monday through Friday. Paradise Delian Grill now offers catering, delivery and space rental for a corporate event or party, even if it's after hours. Visit their website at www-paradisedeliangrill.com for the full menu and more information.
Thank you, and that's Scott, you're about three doors down from them, that's one of my favorite places to eat Pascagoula, they are definitely good. So we appreciate, appreciate what they've done and appreciate how they've, uh, improved their building and the area around it, so thank you very much, guys. All right, next item is the consent agenda, does any member of the council have a question about how I am on the consent agenda? Michael, Michael Moore, I had one question, I just wanted you to confirm, uh, our conversation earlier today that the, or the email, the language that is in seven F, the Budget Amendment twenty point one-one, that the language regarding the use of bond funds has been removed and it'll be coming from budgeted funds, is that correct?
Correct, it's not the bond funds.
Okay, all right. If there are no questions for the, uh, regarding the consent agenda, is there a motion to accept the, approve the consent agenda? As amended? Is there a second? Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Next item is now eight A, Pascagoula Sports Complex and Mississippi Power Lighting, Mr. Silverman?
Yes, sir, we had a meeting with BMA engineers last week in regards to the Pascagoula Sports Complex. This is continuing to make progress and, uh, some items will be coming up tomorrow at the joint meeting to discuss, uh, you know, how some of these areas of the complex are going to proceed. Uh, but before you today is a request to have the deposit paid for from Mississippi Power Lighting. It's coming in a total of nine thousand ninety-three dollars and thirty cents. And this is just something that BMA is requesting council to approve, so utilities can be transferred and reported to the building.
Is there any discussion?
So they consider, I mean, how many deposits do we have with Mississippi Power South City? I know you, so you don't know, but, I mean, I would think if we've got power on this building and Mississippi Power, why are we paying another deposit?
Is, is it a deposit for service or is it a deposit for equipment?
Oh, service.
I guess just being good for it isn't good enough anymore.
I don't know, to me, I'm gonna reach out to them and ask why we're having to pay for it.
I agree.
Wait, 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 wait. I'm just looking at email correspondence from Mr. Bartfield.
I, I thought it was for equipment?
Yes, I, I'm looking at email right now, it's saying this deposit is not a deal for services installation, we were doing that portion at no cost. So I retract that, sorry about that.
So wouldn't we be able to use the bus leasing the equipment from them? Wouldn't we be able to use the repayment money to pay the deposit if it's going towards the lighting?
We shouldn't be able to, but that's something.
But it's part of the contract on the light.
Okay, so is it, I guess what I'm trying to understand is this for, I, I read it to mean that it was for equipment. In other words, whether you put down a ten percent deposit or a twenty-five percent deposit, it goes towards the purchase price. But you're telling me it's really more for a service related?
No, actually, I, I, I want to apologize if it's not for service related. Reading the email, it shows that, that, that is not times the portion of the cost of this project.
All right, okay. Well, I, I don't know if that answers your question, Scott, if it's for equipment and we're gonna have to pay for it eventually anyway, the deposit is, I, I, I get that it's almost like saying we don't, we're not good for it, but, you know, we're gonna pay for it at some point. So, uh, what do you want to do?
Well, do we have anybody up around which? Well, most of the time, that, those type connection pieces and things are included in the art, even on the construction part of the project, but, uh.
That's the least of both, correct?
I don't know if they're talking about getting the power, I mean, normally it comes into one of their transformers. And then it leaves the transformers and go into, to the cell. I mean, I, I don't know what part of the equipment it would be.
Yeah.
Maybe Michael needs to touch special, we need clarification.
I mean, if you could get some clarification by tomorrow, that would be perfect.
Sure. And do that.
Okay, so, uh, for the record, is there a motion to table the issue regarding the specific power lighting in the Pascagoula Sports Complex? Is there a second? Any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item eight B, the River Park Access Road in Marina Turn Lane, Michael, you're up again.
Yes, sir, this item pertains to the River Park Access Road that was brought, uh, before council about a year and a half ago. To basically adding an access lane to the new park over on the other side of the bridge. Um, Neil Schaefer was the engineering firm working on this. And they've spent the past few months, uh, doing their due diligence on the project. And this is just being brought for council this time to see if you want to proceed with this current project. And, uh, David is here from Neil Schaefer and he can give you a little bit more information about it if you have any questions.
Thank you, um, Roger?
Could you just introduce yourself for the council, I know who you are, but.
I'm David Ford, selling to Neil Schaefer, the firm is, uh, having to design a contract for this particular project. We had the project announcement ceremony with Mayor Maxwell and we proceeded to go with the, uh, the sort of design of the project. And since this is actually a turn lane and access off of US Highway ninety, we have to get a permit from the State Department of Transportation. And also since the US Highway, we can contact the Federal Highway Administration. We did, we did a courtesy call with them to verify before we went too much further, would this permit be approved? Well, M D O T was, uh, well, Mr. Council Barry leading the way, by the way, uh, did, got back to us in due diligence quick time. Um, and we just got verbal approval, verbal approval is the key word, with the Federal Highway Administration. We still do the permit, the full, you know, papers submitted, uh, contract, I mean, permit for approval. But with the change and the administration and everything, though, we just wanted to be sure that, you know, we're still proceeding with the project. I don't proceeding with it, it's, it's the consent of the council to proceed, just delayed due to the, due to the permitting process with the state and federal highway.
So is the one point five million dollars, is that full funding part of the project or is that on?
We've already started some of the project surveys, we've done the geotechnics, we've been done, we're coming by now, right now. So, I mean, we're still proceeding, we have, we're consistent with the council with all the changes, administration, we're consistent with the council.
So do you need any action from us tonight?
I just, you know, I, I mean, if we're, if y'all okay with us proceeding, we're, we're proceeding, we just weren't sure that everybody was on board with everything.
Any further questions, any objection from the council, I guess that's, there you go.
Thank you, you got it.
Thank you, thank you for your time, thank you David. Um, if I may, without objection from the rest of the council, I'd like to just go ahead and add and consider item eight D, the bank depository bids. Cause I think we're going to be talking for a little while on the item eight C, the engineering request for qualifications. Uh, I think all of you have received the tabulation of city depository proposals. For what it's worth, Community Bank proposed an interest rate of one point one seven percent versus the Marine Bank at point six zero percent. And the first at a interest rate of one point seven five, but did offer an option for it to be variable. Does anyone have any questions of either Mr. Silverman or anyone else regarding the, the bids as presented? Is there any motion, we, we're obligated to go ahead and approve one of these institutions as the, um, city depository institution for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty?
I'll make a motion to continue to use the first as our depository.
Okay, any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? One other question, since we picked the first, they did offer a variable versus a fixed rate. Does the council, I think we need to at least give some instructions to Mr. Silverman as to whether or not the council's leaning towards the fixed rate of one point seven five or the variable rate, which by my calculation would presently be one point six five. Obviously, by definition, it could go up, it could go down, but is there a consensus among the council as to whether the big fixed rate and the variable?
Fixed rate last year, correct?
Uh, it was fixed last year. Anybody, anybody interested in the variable? All right, well, to the extent you need some authorization, Michael, the one point seven five fixed is the number. Okay, all right, now, heading back to item eight C, the engineering request for qualifications. Michael, if you would, just kind of intro this for us.
Yes, sir, uh, in December, our city engineer resigned. With the resignation of our city engineer, we, uh, entered into basically a contract for interim city engineer with, uh, Compton Engineering. And during this, this time, we sent out a request for qualifications from engineering firms. This process lasted for about a month and, uh, we, we received bids from five engineering firms. And we received these five engineering firm bids and a selection criteria was provided to, uh, council to show what questions were being asked and to give you a sense of the evaluation process. And I know some of the firms, uh, council was not familiar with, so I also provided this selection criteria to three city employees as well. Uh, Mr. Scruggs, Ms. Rayly, who works on grants and works with, uh, most of the engineering firms that the city has worked with prior. And also, uh, Joel Brewer, who oversees utility partners. And to just give you kind of how the scoring, the breakdown shaped out with city employees. We had, uh, basically two, uh, overseeing the approval for Compton Engineering to provide services. And we had one approving for, uh, Machado Cantana. And the feedback that I did get from some of the council members was, uh, in favor of Compton Engineering. So this was basically, uh, uh, from the council members that I did hear from, uh, in favor of Compton. And also from the city employees in favor of, uh, Compton Engineering as well. But this is a council decision and at council discretion.
One of the things that we talked about, I think, maybe one of us or a couple of us had conversations about this, was the selection criteria, the sheet that you put out and some concerns uh, for us that we may have experience with one or more of them, but not with all of them. And, and I didn't feel qualified to be able to put a grade down, uh, uh, say for instance with Burke Kleinbeater. I, I, to, to my knowledge, never had any dealings with them, so I don't know how to grade and would not be fair. And I think you talked about potentially circulating this among the staff, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
The circulation term?
As a group of employees, I sent them that update.
And, and, and this is more much of, an, an issue for the council, a question I'm throwing out there. My own intention, purely subjective intention with picking a city engineer was to have somebody that for all intents and purposes, to the best we could through outsourcing, replace Jackie Turner as being that person who could as being that person who could handle the odd questions that came up. Or the issues, like for instance, the library that has come up on an emergent basis that may need some inquiry with an engineering to, maybe there's a structural issue combined with an HVAC that's causing a problem. I don't know that. Some of the proposals I've gotten, and I will throw this out for some of the proponents or the applicants, is as if we were hiring to do all of the work, all of the engineering work for the city below a certain threshold. And I simply throw that out to get a discussion going as far as what our expectations were. Because mine was simply to get somebody on board that could handle the day-to-day engineering issues, but not necessarily handle every single project that we would have going below a certain threshold. So I opened the floor for discussion.
Well, I agree with Stephen. I think there needs to be a threshold. I mean, we do a $3 million project, I definitely think it needs to be fit out as far as engineering. But, you know, I think the time they can save, you know, just the process of putting out the RFPs and advertising them sometimes can go into 45, 60 days. So to be able to have the engineering done on a $100,000 project or possibly even a $250,000 project, I think would be an asset to the city. But, you know, anytime it can save us money and actually also get the best person. I mean, all engineers aren't the same, and they don't all cater to the same type of projects. So I think we need to have a little leeway, not just to give them everything, but to have a threshold.
Let me ask real quick. I see Jeff Clemmons here for Compton Engineering, and of course Damon's here on behalf of Neil Schaefer. Is there anyone here on behalf of Burke Kleinbeater? Is there anyone here on behalf of Machado Cantano? Is there anyone here on behalf of the Pickering Firm? Again, I would open up the floor. Does anybody have any questions for any of the two representatives that are here, Jeff or Damon Toricelli, about their proposals and?
Well, Jeff, I didn't see you. There you did, not Mr. Corley there, but. Can you tell us from your experience with handling, I know you've got some projects over some cities up and down the coast, great counties, that, that y'all are doing this type of work? Or is, how is it formed? Do y'all have a threshold on the dollar amount that you? I mean, I noticed in your proposal that you said anything over $50,000 is gonna be on a different rate as far as a project. But is there certain ways that y'all are handling that?
Yeah, probably the closest structure of a contract that was your RFP went out that we dealt with was the City of Ocean Springs. And it was, that $50,000 threshold was simply, that defines when a project has to go out for bid, rather than just being able to take quotes. So those projects that had to go out for bid, which meant, you know, typically, you had everything with that. You may have a survey, you may have a geo tech, you know, vertical construction, then possibly have to get architects involved. You know, those were done as separate projects. And, and we don't, we didn't necessarily always do those. You know, there were other projects that other firms, you know, got hired for, especially if it involved, you know, kind of MDO, federal money, or even money where they had to go out for RFP. You know, we weren't always necessarily doing those projects.
That's actually probably a benefit for the engineering firms because there's a lot more detail involved and.
Sure. And putting out something for bid versus, you know, say you had a $30,000 corporate project that needed replacing. You can put together a quote package, you know, in a matter of hours or days and put that out for quotes. And it's a lot less to deal with than having to go out for actual bid. We have to put a set of contract documents together, go through the advertising process, you know, answer the questions, and conduct the, you know, receiving the bids. So that's where that delineation came from. But the rest of it was basically, as Councilman Burns described, handling day-to-day activities. A lot of it is coordination with public works, you know, and our city manager, mayor, and that type of government. To where, you know, you're actually dealing with their, you know, their public works, you know, or the mayor, the council, and the day-to-day issues. And, so just general engineering support, but kind of like you described. So the larger projects, now we did do a lot of them, you know, but a lot of them we didn't do. They still had other consultants working for the city. And that's, that was kind of my understanding of that RFP was that, you know, maybe some of those larger projects, but not necessarily. Those may be handled through a whole separate process with a different consultant involved.
Jeff, let me ask you a question, and I don't mean to be pointed, but you, you obviously, your abilities are well respected. And that's why a lot of cities like Bay St. Louis and others have hired you, Hancock County, as a city engineer. And you're a resident of Pascagoula and obviously familiar, as a lifelong resident, with a lot of things in this city. Do you, if you are picked as the city engineer, do you see that you have enough time to devote to the needs for the city despite the fact that you are a very busy guy and have a significant client base?
Yeah, no, to be very candid, not without help. I mean, you know, we've got other engineers in our firm that will have to help me support that. But in this, in the interim role, you know, what I've done is I've tried to structure my schedule to where Hancock County, I'm designated a permanent county engineer. So, you know, I have to respect that and I enjoy doing that. I want to continue to support that for the now. But I've already started managing a schedule that basically Hancock County and Pascagoula could be all I'm pretty much doing. And when stuff comes up in Pascagoula, you know, that I need to support on, James Douglas is the main one that's in this office that would be helping with that. But as far as giving phone calls, in the last, you know, three weeks or four weeks in the interim capacity, of course, it's been mostly reactive, which nobody likes. But that's just the nature of where the city's at, you know, the problems have come up on a day-to-day basis. You know, I've tried to be very timely and give advice and provide an answer for the good. And if it went beyond just a simple, this is the answer, this is what needs to be done about it, and, you know, even James has gotten involved in the background, they helped me. Or, look, there's gonna be a lot of cases where the market really is, it's gonna have to involve other people. Because just like the library, I know a lot of what the guy was saying, I'm sure. But, you know, I would have to see a mechanical engineer to, you know, interpret this.
The other question I had for you was on your pricing structure. You had a 15% markup for subcontractors. Does that include the mechanical engineering company and the other one that was attached to that? But if you have to hire them to provide the services, they're included in the markup? Or is this just some sort of, if we have to get, I don't know, a fluid mechanical engineer or something really odd? Explain to me how that works.
Something odd, I don't, to be honest, I have to go back and look at the proposal. I think it had their rates in it.
It did, okay, okay.
Those rates, I'd have to check and see. I don't remember if you can.
It didn't, it didn't exclude them, and I just wrote down your, your two, I call them subs, but the two ones you mentioned are Stevens and Welcon. And you have consultant subcontractors costing plus 15%. And I just didn't, I guess what I was wanting to avoid is if they were included as part of your package to say that, you know, we can provide you complete services. I didn't want to see an invoice a year from now where you did have to use Stevens and there's a 15% markup.
Yeah. Well, and look, if we were selected, you know, when we're putting that contract together, we can sell that in black and white. So that if they're part of our team, we'll have a rate that that's the rate, they're running the markup. It would just be specialty contractors would make the markup.
Just to be honest with you, that's the way I took it, is they included those guys as part of their team, any consultants that wasn't part of their team, but to me, that's the way I read.
I just wanted to clarify that. Any other questions, any member of the council? Damon, if you would, the proposed residence, the proposed project manager is Dennis Reeves. And I'm, and I apologize, he may have been here and I just didn't know it. Is he, does he work in the Pascagoula office?
Yes, right, yes, right there.
Okay. And he's a resident of Goshay, I take it, is that correct?
Ocean Springs.
Ocean Springs, yeah, okay. And how many other engineers are in that office besides Dennis?
In that office, it's four, it's a difference. Three.
And the comment is that Jeff made about sort of the structure with, you know, providing day-to, what I call day-to-day routine services, but over a certain threshold, whatever that threshold is decided to be, you're fine with that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we took the proposal to be the same way that Mr. Clemmons did, you know, about, you know, do that and anything beyond that. Other firms, if you require somebody else, possibly, or look up firms, you don't worry about that.
Thanks. Well, I'll just say for the council, all of these firms, I think, are qualified, all of them, I think, could easily be the city engineer. And I would say to both of you, since you're here, I think whatever the vote turns out to be tonight, it's not a vote against either of you or any of the other firms. I mean, I think it's just, we have to make a hard choice based upon extremely qualified applicants. So having said that, if there's no further discussion, is there a motion on the, on the proposals to select a permanent city engineer?
Comment that we select Compton Engineering as the city engineer firm.
Could I offer a friendly amendment that it would be Jeff Clemmons? I've been pretty adamant for a while that we hire an individual for the purpose that Jeff just mentioned. I mean, I understand that he's got other people, but there's, I'm big about one-stop shopping, whether it's a lawyer or an engineer, I'd like to see one person. So is that acceptable? Okay. Is there a second on the amended motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If I may, subject to a contract to be negotiated with the city attorney, is that included in the resolution with everybody's consent? Okay, because we have to come up with the terms and just, you know, there'll be a contract that we'll sign with you. And we'll, we'll get those terms out as soon as we can, but thank you very much. And Damon, again, thank you very much. You, you work for a great firm, and you're a, you're a good engineer and a good guy, if I may say.
We knew I worked for the city, has to do it, so yeah, we enjoy that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo what Steve said, because once, once we got past, you know, the local experience and things like that, I pretty much had, I mean, I've dealt with most of these except for Robin Pickering. And they're all very good firms and all very well handled our work, and appreciate you guys' business.
Yes, thank you very much, okay.
Stephen, on the contract, do y'all like us to prepare the framework?
I think that would be easier to get started. I don't think we have a form engineering contract in the, in the form book, since we've had a permanent engineer for so long. So if, I think to get, get it going, it would be appropriate for you to send it to Michael or whomever.
Okay, so here's the thing, again, obviously subject to much modification, but it would be structured similar to the others we've done.
I understand. Okay, thank you all very much. Thank you very much, thank you too for coming. All right, on the claims docket, we have nine A, the item that excludes coastal development. Is there any question by a member of the council regarding the docket of claims?
I have a motion to approve the amended docket of claims.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Jennifer, do you mind taking over just to handle that by?
I have a motion to approve coastal development.
Has a motion to approve coastal development.
Bring the second.
Sir.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's ready.
Coastal development.
Moving now to the mayor council items, I think there was only one item, 10E. I have received a letter, and I believe I circulated it to the members of the council. If I did not, I have copies here. This letter came in after the last meeting, it was mailed to the city hall, and I just received it today. The land trust for the Mississippi Coastal Plain and Hancock Whitney are on a project called Perseverance Oaks Program where they want to plant 10 live oak trees in 20 South Mississippi communities. The deadline to respond, at least based on the letter, was tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. I did contact them and say, you know, could we have some more time if we're going to get 10 live oak trees to at least give the council an opportunity on where to pick where to go? And they said, yes, take all the time you need, we'll get back in touch with you when you need a decision. So I, just for informational purposes only, so, and might actually want to get Pascagoula Pride involved since those ladies are, and I mean this in the best way possible, they are obsessed with how the city looks and cleanliness and beautification. And I can't think of any other organization that would be more suited to give us advice on where 10 live oak trees might go. So, any amendments? All right, that takes us now to the end of the open session agenda. Is there anybody that has signed on the pads to speak to the council?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Can someone sign in, because he came in late, or?
Sign up until the very end, I think.
I'll listen to you guys.
All right, I think probably we know who you are, but if you could, just for the record, tell us who you are.
Okay, on Belinda Smith, Denise LaCran. We have just a PowerPoint we wanted to bring back from last time. We did not realize that we had to sign up, so we just wanted to bring something and address our concerns about the situation on our street.
What floor is yours?
Okay, and Denise has a letter that she would like to read.
Clickers up there, on the podium. It's a round silver one? Yes, yeah, click the button.
Thank you for seeing us. Two weeks ago, this item came up on the agenda regarding manufactured homes, and there was a gentleman that spoke. There was a gentleman that spoke, I think his name was Mr. Scruggs, is that correct? Anyway, we didn't know that we had to sign up, otherwise we would have spoken that day. What we want to discuss is, I know that he's supposed to come back in two weeks and after he researched similar communities in Ocean Springs and in Foley. That was my understanding of the meeting two weeks ago. What we would like to talk about is what's going on in our neighborhood and the topic of manufactured homes. And the differences between, I guess, modular homes and manufactured homes are still unclear.
And when you say your neighborhood, you live on Anchor Street.
I live on Anchor Street, yes. When he talked about there being manufactured home on Beach Boulevard, this is a picture of the one that is there. And once again, we're not sure of the distinction between the modular home versus manufactured home. They're both built off-site and then brought on-site. However, with the manufactured homes, our understanding and what happened on our street is like the insides of the home is completely done versus the modular home, which the exterior and interior finish wants the main frame and stuff on-site. So correct me if I'm wrong on that, we're still a little unclear. But as you can see, this particular home looks nothing like the home that came to our road four weeks ago. Here's another considered modular home. This is the one on Washington Avenue right across from the beach park. And as you can see, it has brick, stucco, all of those other things, which obviously were done after it was, it came on-site. This is what came to our street about four weeks ago. And as you can see, that all of the exterior had already been completed. And even on its journey, you know, there was some issues with the vinyl siding and things falling off on its journey to our street. As you can see in these photos, because there were two halves, the inside, you can see. As you can see in these photos, because there were two halves, the inside, you can see the, the light switches and everything else, the inside was completely done, the paint, the cabinetry, all of those things were already done. Here's another view of it as it was being pieced together. And this is afterwards, after the two pieces were put together, as you can see, look at the roof line, there's several places on the home that look to have some structural issues. And this, this photo is taken today, as, you know, the home has already been put together, furniture's already been delivered to the home, and there's, there's more than one structural issue going on here. Our perspective, we're not trying to be petty about what someone's home looks like. To understand our perspective, you have to realize that most everyone on our street, well, everyone on our street, you know, we lost everything in Hurricane Katrina. And it took a lot of time and effort to make the decision to build back. And as a result, you know, we, Pascagoula, this was unheard of, and we had to jump through a lot of hoops in order to build back, with the building codes and the FEMA flood maps and everything else changing frequently, we had a lot of hoops to jump through. Not only that, but considering most of the people, this is waterfront properties, we all had wind and flood insurance, and unlike other people in the city that received grants that they didn't have to pay back, most of us ended up in a battle between the wind insurance and the flood insurance, and most of us ended up having to get SBA loans, just to function, just to live, and making the decision to build back was, was very difficult. But, we did it. We all made the decision to commit to this city, we committed to our neighborhood, and slowly, one by one, we started building back. One by one, we made a commitment to this city, and once again, we reinvested in this city, instead of moving to another town, which would have been much easier. One by one, we rebuilt. We also, because of the type of neighborhood that we rebuilt, we have attracted other people that wanted, and are in the process of building on our street, people that are building on our street because of similar styles and structures and, and all of those things. As you can see, as Mr. Schreger said, everyone does have different tastes, we all have different tastes, and you can see how very different all of the houses on our street are. But, you can also see, there is continuity in this neighborhood regarding style and structure, and when the home in question, the manufactured home, came to our street, there were immediate concerns regarding our investments, our investments in our home, the investments in our neighborhood, our city, questions about, will this affect our property values, our resale potential?
How did this even happen? Do you have a picture of the mobile home house as it is?
The house?
Yes.
That, I just have that.
Okay, that far. Okay, we don't have a finished one.
There wasn't a finished one.
Well, that, that was, that kind of focused on that one.
But, all in all, I mean, I don't care what, I mean, there have been so many people down our streets, even an insurance agent that I suppose was going to look at that house to insure, when he flat-out said, this is a mobile home. How does this happen? I mean, I know we have to submit plans, because we've all done it. But how was this, was it shown as two parts, put together, and did the city just, okay, it meets codes and we're gonna let a mobile home get stuck up on islands? I mean, how does this happen? I know most of y'all, and I know y'all would not want this, and I have nothing against mobile homes, we're not saying that about a local home or a manufactured home. But we have put a lot of effort and money into our homes, and when you have a manufactured home put up, it, it really, it really upsets you. I'm sure if y'all had something put up next to your house like that, it would concern you, is this going to depreciate our home? The value of our home? You know, does anybody know this? Or was it just, ooh, it meets code, let's, let's go? Did anybody know what was going up? I mean, the person that did put this up owns a mobile home park, or not a park, excuse me, a site where on Highway Six, and he sells them. So that kind of gives you something to look at, and I'm not, I mean, we're not saying that, it's just, it's concerned to us. What's happened to our neighborhood?
I think, you know, last, last two weeks ago, we discussed this, we passed Donovan, basically came out to the neighborhood community and see what's their standard, because if you look at this particular modular home compared to the modular home on Beach Boulevard, you're not going to know that.
Yes.
You drive down, look, you get your house, and I mean, you could never tell that that was a modular home. This, the roof line, this is the windows.
Lot of flaws.
I mean, so, I think we're in the process of making sure this doesn't happen again. This will just happen to sneak in, I guess.
How, I mean, how did this happen? Is it going to happen again?
Donovan, it happened to be designated a modular home.
It, it needs decodes, let's say modular home, it needs a code.
So modular homes come with cabinets already in them?
Uh, they can come, uh, they can actually come in a single piece. A modular home meets the International Building Code set of standards, and is therefore considered a modular home or ICC compliant. The use of the word manufactured home for mobile homes, as these two ladies have used, typically refers to a structure that meets HUD requirements, and it has a stamp on it from Housing Order Development that says it meets a different set of criteria. Those are not considered modular or compliant with ICC, and those will not be approved. You know, I, I totally understand that there is some concern, the fact that this does not look like other houses in the neighborhood, but if somebody had come in and built a 1500 stick-built home, and there's a tunnel in Pascagoula that have very little, you know, depth, does not have a roof line that has a cross gable or what have you, that's got windows or eight-foot ceilings, I mean, it's got so many things that are part of our code, but can be built on-site and look just as bad, ju- just like this home, or look, or look worse. I mean, we don't regulate aesthetics. I'll tell you, I've talked to Ocean Springs, Gulfport, Biloxi, they don't regulate aesthetics. I have talked to, I've talked to Madison in Oxford, Mississippi, too, they do, in some sense, regulate aesthetics, offer up, if it's not outside of the store district, and Madison just has some general rule of the scaloir, something on the block within the neighborhood, but unfortunately, we all know Madison regulates McDonald's and Super Walmarts. So, the regulating of homes and the studies of homes in a residential district that is not a store, is something that is not very, is not, not common at all in Mississippi.
Would you want it in your neighborhood? But would you want it in your neighborhood, Donovan?
If somebody decided to build this in my neighborhood.
Next door to you, you'd want that?
Uh, as a person understands, you're right, as a property owner, it may not be the best thing I would want in my neighborhood, but it would be something that my, that didn't have the right to do.
It's like, this is what we want for Pascagoula.
Man, it's like, do you?
Or how did you, how did you, when you got these plans, did you see that it was two pieces that were cut straight down the middle and put together? I mean, I'm just asking, because that's about how most mobile home or double wide are. I mean, is this the plan? Did you see two houses being put together? Just asking.
Yes, yes.
I think you solved that, you couldn't identify that it was a mobile home.
Man, it's not a mobile home.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but let's not have an argument here, I know you wanted to ask some questions, Dorina, and I appreciate that. We're not going to solve it tonight. Let me, let me just, I would like to investigate this issue, and I, and obviously Donovan has done some calls, and made some inquiries about what other cities do, and I, I understand where you're coming from, I get it, but here's, here's my problem, and, and just think about this, you don't have to answer me tonight, but if, I was out in California about eight years ago, got to go through Malibu, I saw round houses, octagon houses, things that looked like almost they were off the set of the Addams Family, and they were stick-built homes, and so, I guess, where, what I'm concerned about is, what if this had been a stick-built home and not a modular home? Would we still, would the issue still be the same? And I guess, how, you know, where, where do we, as a government, I mean, we're a government here, how do we, as a government, regulate people's use of private property within certain, you know, certain rules and requirements? And I hear what you're saying, and, and your concern is very understandable, but where, what if it had been a stick-built home? What if, you know, I could think of any number of sort of hypotheticals about somebody could build a home that probably, everybody in this room would be weird and not desirable, but where do we draw the line? I guess, and that's the hypothetical that I throw out there, that I can't answer tonight, I don't think Donovan can, nor Jennifer, nor you. Where, where is this line between what is acceptable and what's not acceptable? Because I don't think you can focus on just modular homes, because a stick-built home could be built somewhat similar to this and, and look about the same, it just may be what that particular odd owner wants. So, I just throw that out there for consideration, because I'm having trouble where to draw the line, so.
I mean, that's understandable. What about structurally? Does this look structurally sound?
I'm the wrong person to ask, I, I can't tell you.
I don't think roof lines are net.
Well, how do we know that, has it been inspected? I mean, it already came put together, I mean, the inside was already sheetrock and painted. How do we know that they have the hurricane straps all the way around? Yeah, you can see them from the, straight down the middle, but how do we know that they're completely all the way around when the sheetrock is already done?
I think that's a very valid question, when you're talking about the structure, I guess, when, when, when you get more to the aesthetics, is, is where my question was going, where, okay, how do we draw the line? Is it type of construction? Is it just how it looks? Does it, does it have to meet certain criteria that we said?
What effect would it affect our investments in our home?
I get it.
No, it's, it's multifaceted. And, and just like.
And it's very hard.
But also, he also said, when, you know, that this was approved for 165 mile-an-hour winds, okay, when this showed up to Ingers Street, there had already been vinyl siding blown off, and you cannot tell me that was ever, from point A to point B, probably never got up above 55 miles an hour.
Again, Dorina, we're not engineers.
Yeah.
And I can't answer that question, and frankly, neither can you, because you're not an engineer, too, and so that's why we have, hopefully, hired a city engineer and, and code enforcement, and so, any event, I, look, it's something that you, that's gotten our attention, and deservedly so, I, I can assure you of this, that there's no, there's...
I don't mean to interrupt you, and I agree, she's not an engineer, but she did have to rebuild her home, and I had to rebuild mine, we had to have all of that stuff in place, so she does know a little bit about the state that she just made.
I, I'm not questioning that she did, and I'm just saying that, you know, asking engineering questions, I just, I can't answer them, and neither can she, neither can you, neither can Willie, neither can, can us, we're not the engineers here, and so I...
But a valid statement.
I, I'm not trying to argue with this.
But if you put up a metal building in the city of Pascagoula, the metal building has to be rated at a certain miles per hour before you can put it up. Mr. Jordan puts up greenhouses on his property on Telephone Road, it has to be approved, engineered stamp, to be approved by a certain miles per hour, so, it's, I have no doubt that Donovan then checked the stamp, the, you know, the engineered stamp, and whatever comes with the possibility of the property. I, I understand also, but it is very difficult. I mean, a modular home comes in and it's stamped 165 miles an hour, our code at the present time is 150 miles an hour, it meets all our requirements, there's nothing we can do to keep the man from putting it up on his property at this time, so, it's...
Well, I mean, it's already up, so we understand.
We understand that. Who does, what is it going to take for this not to happen? I mean, there's several more empty blocks on Ingers Street, or up and down Washington, and up and down Beach Boulevard, how are you going to tell the next person?
I agree with that, but we deal with it every other month, we deal with grass not being cut, people got junk in their yard, it's, we, we deal with all this. There's a lot of people that's living next to houses right now that would love to have that home sitting next to them, as long as the man would cut their yard, take care of or piece of property, so, it's, it's very difficult for us to...
I know, I would be totally against this, I live on Petticoat Street, I would be totally against it.
I wouldn't either.
I would be totally against it, I would be, I don't, not these people, I know they have to live, but it should be in certain locations.
Okay, now...
I would want it on my street.
Yes, well, is this going to make our, the depreciation of our, you know, our house go down?
I'm not aware of that.
About our property value?
I wouldn't want this, I, I think it should, you should probably...
But you wouldn't want a man to plant that in the grass, either. That's what we're talking about.
I wouldn't either. I think it's showing...
Any more problems?
Well, we're not talking about that, we're talking about that. Yeah, I, I would, if it was that bad, I would go to the store and mow this grass, but, you know, it's just, how can we keep this from not happening? I mean, yeah, it's, it's a hard line to draw, but we've got to draw it somewhere. We're trying to get Pascagoula people to come to Pascagoula.
And I appreciate that, yes.
And I hate to say it, but this has been a big topic around town, and the sad thing is, and you don't want to hear it, is people go, that's Pascagoula for you, and you just want to go, but it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be. You know, we're trying to make this a good city, it's come a long way since Katrina, but we, we can't let things like this happen, so what can we do to permit it? I mean, is each street going to have to come up with an HOA on their own? I mean, what, what are we going to have to do? Are we going to have to take a, a lot of this on our own?
Well, I would tell you as a lawyer, that the easiest thing to do, you just named your own poison, you could get all the owners together who currently own property on that street, and you could, you know, as long as you all agree, you could impose whatever covenants you want on that property, as far as aesthetics, what can go on them, and so forth. And so, you know, that, that is definitely an option, that's something you don't need city intervention for, you could do that on your own.
But this is sad, the thing that this is, has had to come down to that, that someone couldn't see that this was a double-wide mobile home being put up on islands.
Well...
Modular. Excuse me, home, modular.
Okay, all right. Well, Dorina, all I can tell you is, is that you give us something to think about, we've already asked Donovan to look into this, and I'm sure it'll be his topic of discussion, to see whether or not we can modify our code to accommodate this. I can't make a promise as to whether we can or not, because we have to follow the law just like you do.
Okay.
And there are certain limitations of what we can do when, when it comes to affecting someone's private property. So, I, I can't answer that question tonight, I don't think anybody in this room can, but I think it's certainly something worthy of further discussion, as you said, to try to prevent a worst-case scenario from happening, where, yes, you might have significant homes built on a particular street, and all of... And all of a sudden, someone plops down something that doesn't comport either with, I, I hate, I don't want it to be aesthetics, but I get what you're saying, that, you know, this may not be up to the same requirements as the houses that have been built by the other owners who invested time, money, sweat and effort into doing it. And, and I think, I do think everyone in this council appreciates that. So, um, thank you for that. Appreciate you coming. And, uh, let's keep talking about it.
All right. Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing further, uh, we're about to go into a closed session to determine whether or not an executive session is needed. We appreciate everyone coming tonight. You're more than welcome to stay, but you'll have to be outside during the course of the closed session and executive session. And, uh, we'll see you tomorrow.